Thanks, Hask.
Six o'clock, so we will kind of be public hearing orders and proposed public. Change like the. So like we've kind of noted it last time, we had to publish it, kind of worst case scenario in the high end. But there'll be zero change in the tax rate or actually like Julie said, just a fraction of a penny less. So actually pretty close even. So since there is zero public here, go ahead and adjourn the meeting, the motion adjourn. Second, should second all the papers say I. So meeting or public meeting has been adjourned. Move on to the regular meeting. Here we have a. Changes to agenda at all.
I like the motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry. Favor to approve the agenda, say I.
Aye.
It's been approved. Look, send items if anybody had any questions. Question is not really.
I'll make a motion to approve the concerns.
So. Second, those favor, yeah.
Aye.
Send items are approved. The public for public forum. So we'll move right on to the principal's reports.
I'll go first.
Still go till six fifty.
I truly don't have much time. We have our National Honor Society induction ceremony today annual. I want to at least recognize the kids that came in, which is one of our, it is our highest academic honor based on character, leadership and service. Grace Andrick, Olivia Burdes, I can get these and just email them to Julie, Callie Cross, Eli D., Austin England, Bree Hopkins, Cameron Russell, Claire Shanks, Natalie Shed and Callie Van Beek. Our kids are already on the National Honor Society, really run the ceremony, parents come in, it was a really nice ceremony today. Again, I thought our kids did a nice job, especially junior high kids kind of. Seeing that and our kids modeling what, what we hope, if a lot of kids want to achieve. FFA had a couple of things in the last week, I went to the FFA banquet Saturday, Anna Van Doosen. And her parents and her leaders just did a great job, it was a really nice banquet, recognized a lot of kids, great meal. And then they had the state convention yesterday and today, I really appreciate a lot of eighth graders went on the second day, which really is how you build a program and get kids involved. So. She's just doing a fantastic job over there. Senior exit interviews are next week, I know I mentioned it last month, I sent you all an email just an hour or so ago that gave the list of. Whose, whose interviews are the two nights, so if you have a connection or just want to stop in, again, you're more than welcome and invited to any of those either of the two nights, they're really. Just really good to reflect and really celebrate, the kids do a really nice job, most all of them are fantastic. We just finished Iowa, well, we're in the middle of finishing Iowa assessments, we had the Gen A kids taking one week, our kids with IEPs. The next week and we just have some makeups and stuff, we're really close, we have, I hate all on one hand of people that still need to finish the Iowa assessments, but. It takes a lot windy and then even our staff and the makeups, I mean, it's, it's a, it's at the top of the list for a couple of weeks around here of what has to get done and just the change in schedules and stuff. And then looking forward to Monday, it's one of our full day PDs that was, that was on our calendar last year, that's our PD with half day with Colfax Mango. It's really beneficial to our high school and middle school teachers as we're really all singletons. Pastor, the great job is teachers on Monday doing, you know, the PLC progress collaborative work, shared agendas and because they have a partner teaching and doing the same thing. We have some of that going, but it's still different when you're sitting next to somebody who's doing math and I do science, or even you're doing upper level math and I'm doing lower level math to really dig in. So Monday is about making those connections. Building those relationships and learning from each other of somebody who's teaching exactly what we're teaching. So we go over Monday for half a day at Colfax Mango. And the last thing I wanted to add is I know Sue had sent out some stuff on conditions of learning, she's not here tonight, we would still could speak to it, that's that survey that you probably all received as parents. That we encourage our community and parents to take, there's three levels to it, our kids, our staff and our community, the ones out to the community, Hask and I are going to have the teachers do it second half of the day on Monday. And then we have a definite scheduled time that our kids sit down, it's all on computer and take that. Next year will not be part of our, the performance profile, but it's still really good data to see. What our kids feel and our parents and our staff feel about our building, we were really happy with those numbers last year, but it's also really good gauge to see. You know where we, where we have some gaps or what we're not doing well as far as this, you know, social emotional safety in our building. So those will be data points you want to look at in the fall. So that's all I got.
That was quick.
Thanks.
Yeah.
How much will you along on something?
You sure do.
Okay.
I'm gonna go really long next month.
Be ready.
On our end, our book class is underway, that's our fundraiser that we started last year. And we've been three days through it and I think we've already had five thousand dollars with the contributions towards that, that'll give us those, hopefully every student will walk away with. I think last year was five or six books or more books. And so last year was close to twenty thousand total contributions, so in the first three days, we're a quarter of the way to that. So hoping that that'll continue to pick up more, more pace, but happy with where we are after three days of it. As Rob mentioned, ICE S, we did that this past week, it's nice to have that completely finished, I believe every one of our kids has actually done as of today. But it takes a lot, like Rob said, it's a lot on windy, it's trying to prepare, get things ready, but we also have parents that contributed some snacks to it. We contributed breakfast to make sure that our kids are ready to go. We had our K through two students line the hallways and give high fives and encouragement to try and get them as hyped as they can to, to give their best effort on the assessment. So. We try and do a lot of different things to make sure that we're going to give our best effort on those days and, and just feel like a, a lot of people stepped up to be able to make that happen, including our, our younger students. As I said, thanks to the state savings bank, they did donate some eclipse classes, so that happened the last Monday, did provide an opportunity for, for students that signed the permission, I think everybody did. To go out and, and take a look after those eclipse glasses, which was a cool experience. So as the day went on, you saw different groups of kids going out. Not only like elementary, but middle school, high school students as well, but they provided us the glasses to be able to do that. So it was a unique opportunity for our kids to be able to do an experience and there was lots of, lots of cool conversations that came from it. So thankful for them. Rob mentioned Ag or FFA, but they also did put on Ag Safety Day last Friday. And a great opportunity again for our kids to go out and experience all the different things that go along with that. They had animals out there, they had tractors, combines, they had all kinds of things for them to educate our young students on all those things. And it's a big day that our kids all look forward to. So. I enjoyed taking them out there, walking around, busting them out, but it was a good day, Anna does a great job. Well, well, I mean, just so many good things to say about her and what she's done, but the Ag Safety Day was awesome for our young kids. We also had fine arts night here a couple of weeks ago, it was a great opportunity again to walk through the school, see all the things that our K through twelve kids put together. She did a great job putting that, that together and, and just being able to see the artwork, but then also knowing that there's opportunity for kids to get on stage and like my own daughter, I play the piano, that was fun to see. But those opportunities are just, are, are cool and, and just want to make sure that we express our gratitude to those that put it on in our community. And then one thing that we're doing with BLT, our building lever team is our SAMI work, so that's our, our self-assessment, our RMTSS system, so we're really trying to. Gauge where we are, the gains that we've made, but also find some areas of improvement. So for the last couple of Thursdays and for the lot of the next Thursdays, it's a, it's a time consuming process to try and gain some consensus on where we think we are within math reading and social emotional behavior. So it's an interesting process, but basically we go through and we try and grade ourselves on where we are, the systems that we have in place. Or the systems that we don't have in place and try and make goals for what we can do in the future. Some can be quick wins, some things that are very easy. Some are big system changes that we need to make to ensure that we have the right pieces in place to make sure that our system is running efficiently as possible. So. It's good conversation, I appreciate that they bring their different perspectives to the conversation and that's really what we want of it. And we're hard on each, on ourselves, we want to see that we want to get ourselves better, so the conversations are deep and strong. And it's, it's an interesting process to see where we are now, where we were previously and where we want to be. So it's good conversation. The last thing I have is that we have our kindergarten roundup, so starting to look forward to next year and that's this Friday, so bringing in our pre-K and other students to see what kindergarten is like, do some testing and kind of focus for the future. So. Been a lot going on, it's still a lot more to go on because we've got a lot of field trips over the next six weeks as well, so.
You had your parent meeting for the roundup?
Yes.
The parent meeting, she had open enrollment forms, do you know how many there were?
Yeah, but she did have them, she has them.
Yeah, I know, I just, I wondered how many were.
I don't want to give a number.
That's right.
Fair amount.
Do you have many that aren't, that weren't in our Facebook?
Pretty good numbers coming back. Right there, thirty-two maybe.
Question. Alright, thank you guys. Well, the safety, kids' security update, kind of.
Yeah, I guess as you can see, Bill Hanson is going to join us and he has, has not. So I just texted, I didn't say like, are you still coming tonight? But I don't know where he's at. So I can give you the best update I can, I've got an email like right now, like it said, soon as we're done here. He and I talked about the garage doors. I, I didn't write all this down because he was coming to explain all this, I know we talked about the door locks and I know you guys were concerned that the hundred dollars per door to install them. But when he explained it, he said, it's not like a door lock, like your home lock, it's super complex and they're actually, that price is a really good price for those kind of door locks. It's a. They give us kind of a bulk discount on these doors, so the bottom line was he can't install them, so the hundred dollars per door was a good price for them. He was going to explain all this to you.
We didn't even know it was a hundred dollars per door, the whole, the whole thing was three hundred, but it didn't break down how much was the labor to install it. So I think that's what you were looking for, right?
Wasn't that in the quote, it was something that said labor.
Oh, we looked that up.
Okay, maybe I just said three hundred dollars per door. Somebody said something about, well, it's gonna be a hundred dollars a door, installing, do you remember?
I think the conversation was. An example, if it was a hundred dollars a door, could you say, you know, I don't think we had that.
No, I don't think we do, and that's all I was really trying to understand was, it was like, yeah, I don't remember what it was, it was.
Close thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And it sounds like.
Well, it just wasn't like, yeah, material.
I think it was like, if it was a hundred dollars a door, that's, we can save X amount.
I think it sounds like the thirteen thousand was a, a good price and they were kind of throwing in the labor for not very much because. Each door lock typically costs a lot more than what they were charging us for it, but since we were getting so many of them, it was kind of a package deal. So I can give you that update. Bill will just have to get back to us about, I know there was a question about Pete Davis room, I know it's getting nicer, past you now, if there's any.
I haven't heard any, any complaints the last two weeks, so. I saw him down there working, I think it's finished, yes, I saw him down there.
And as far as other safety things, we had a. The police and fire department had a training here last weekend. I think it went fine, I haven't heard, I was out of town, so I haven't heard any, that it didn't go well.
Were there school personnel involved with that?
They, it was mostly just the police and fire and I think they did look for some volunteers for kids, I don't, I'm not sure if any kids volunteered like to be. Victims or whatever. The Jasper County EMS, Jamie Robinson was him and then another like a sheriff's office person, Cory Van Cooten, is the same. They were the two guys heading the whole thing up and so they, they kind of managed it all. And they, we didn't invite the public because they wanted to keep it fairly confidential. So we did put something out so that people weren't like, oh my goodness, what's going on at school when they see police and fire car, fire trucks and all that, but I think it went well. And then. I just, after visiting with Cory today, I just sent an email, just to follow up like, can you give us any feedback or anything like that? So I'll keep you guys posted. The other safety, let's see, um, we've got a lot of the cameras are installed. So that's a good portion of the, the budget, so these door locks and the cameras.
I just submitted a reimbursement for required for fifty-five thousand dollars, so that's, we're pretty much done with the camera portion, I think, so. We're going to a hundred and we're at fifty-five thousand up there.
And they're all of them running that, the cameras for all.
I think so, and then you've able to share the link with. Jasper County, like the police, so they, Greg was able to set up an account for them that they can log in if they needed to, to see we. Problems or whatever, and then like the administrator stuff. So.
They get access.
They can access the cameras, you know, they can log right in. We gave them, I think, people, whatever, they, but Greg said it before. You know, safety.
What's everyone's thoughts after the city meeting, it kind of got brought up and we brought, I mean, it just went around and around again, but. Do we want one of these meetings coming up, want to debate it and figure it out what we're doing with this door over here to the library that coming in, I mean, can we just say yes or no to it? And if it's a no, which, I thought maybe we almost came to that conclusion at a previous meeting where we just, but if not, I, I couldn't remember, I just remember we kept debating it, but then. Would you make a decision? And that way it's.
So I come up with an idea that I think we should look into, why don't we just have the library closed during the day?
To the public?
Yeah. They can open, I was talking to Mr. Peterson about it, they could open, we could handle an hour, you know, so if they want to open at two in the afternoon, we could handle an hour because our doors open at, what, three? Right at three, probably three to five, four.
And if we're opening it too, like what, if we're opening it, when we're opening, like either it's open when we have kids there or not.
Yeah, so either one. But that wouldn't cost anything.
What, do they open now or is it all day?
No, on Tuesdays, it, it, that's a full day. Otherwise they're catching a morning and then they're catching an afternoon. And then they might be open a little bit later one evening and then they're closed on Fridays.
They're open hours on Saturday.
But we wouldn't care about Saturday, we wouldn't care about summers, you can, so they can still have their programs, but I just, I wonder. I wondered if we should ask them if they could keep account of how many city or not school related people. Came in during the school day, so we could see, you know, how it would affect it.
Yeah, I know Tuesdays, I believe it's Tuesdays they have the library time, so the little ones. Pre-K, like the babies and toddlers, they have a story time and so lots of moms, a little. Under school age kids come in, there's, I see the same ones every week.
That'd be something though, that if we knew the time, whatever, that we could have somebody scheduled to bound. You know, it's like, here's.
Yeah. I don't know if there's library rules, like for like public libraries that they have to have so many, I, I just don't know if there's rules like. I think getting this happening, pull up the count, it's, we'd be the first step.
Because this was my office being in there, you know, I can kind of garner, you know, what's happening and I don't see many. City people other than the little programs that are happening for preschoolers and that.
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays, right, but it's a specific time, so we could let them in for that time or whatever, but.
Is there anything you can do with these doors, these double doors here and here during that timeframe? Talking about locking doors, is there a set of double doors here and then down the.
Well, during that timeframe, we would just let them in, they would still stay locked, but we would just let those people in at ten o'clock.
Certain people are in, so if there's a concern of people in the building, whether it be little kids' story time or not, can this double door and that double door?
I don't know the answer, I would think kids are still going to need to be able to pass through the halls.
That's what I didn't know, because I know the, the topic of a working bathroom got brought up, that would still work, that would still have access to the.
We need to check into that as well, because I don't know that it's a requirement that we have to have.
I kind of just wondered about that too.
Because look at your, look at any grocery store or restaurant, some restaurants, not all. Or, yeah, they say no public restroom.
Right.
And I think it all depends on like, like maybe it's the length of time that you're considered to be in there, whether you have to have it or not.
Right.
So I think it's probably something that builders should look into with the state, like a fire code or, you know, something like that.
I just thought of those two after I left there, it's like, wow.
Is there, are there doors, like before you go to the middle school commons, is there a set of doors before that or is it after that downtown lunchroom? Well, there's, there's some on my mind.
In this hall, yeah.
I was about to see your picture down there.
Yeah, it's down, at the ramp, yeah, at the ramp.
So you, so you still have. Except the double doors, right?
Two, you still have access to the middle school.
Set of doors there.
Uh, there is, yeah, yeah, so there would be three sets, one of those two down there.
I think that you're gonna have traffic though.
I don't know, I don't know what period.
Kids going, I mean, kids don't just go between classes, there are kids that are going like down the band lessons consistently.
Fire marshal helps saying that too. I don't, not a good idea.
So those doors when the fire alarms go off automatically.
Automatically, but when not.
Right.
I don't know.
I think you have to have at least one, one.
Sphere weather, yeah.
After a meeting the other night and, and when Chief Daggett was here, I mean, I, if somebody wants to get in here, they're going to get in here.
Yeah.
I think we need to make sure we have an SRO officer in the school. Twenty, every, every hour that the school, school day, eight to three or whatever. And spend our money that way because we can try locking every door, all you gotta do is throw a damn rock through a window and you're through, you know, it's like. We can't make it.
Put the rock in the door to prompt it.
Yeah, and, you know, Chief Daggett, he said, you know, the most important thing is a, a person there, a human being there that's, has a weapon or whatever, you know, first to be able to respond as soon as anything happens, so. I mean, we had to chase this deal about the library and, and I'm just, it's like. And if you ever could get. You're never gonna solve that problem. All day long. So until you're ready to move the ag over here. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we just have to keep in mind, it's a deterrent, it's not a preventative.
It's like locking your door, it keeps the honest people out, if somebody wants to get in, they're gonna get in.
And the bathroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I. Yeah, so I've got nothing more, I just know that we, that keeps coming up and even this, I mean, it just makes the call go around, but Julie's idea is a solid.
No.
And maybe we look at that and just say, look, then we're keeping doors, all doors locked throughout the day unless we have special occasions, I mean, that's a good idea. If that ends up upsetting the public, I mean, sit there and say, well, I, I don't know, but. I. I don't want to, I mean, I know where my goal lies on this, but like, and I'll support whatever we do, but it's just one of those, let's just make a decision and let by it for, for a while, so it doesn't, because I, you can sense the community was, the city was. Wound up the other night and we still haven't made a decision on that, I think we might as well just make one, choose right order.
Yeah, they, they get some day used to it.
Yeah, that's a good, if they can change their hours. I think these questions are right asked.
Well, that makes a difference to, to them, because when they're hiring somebody, they're being given.
Sure, you know, that's their own set, and you're switching, pull all that out. So now would be the time for us to, when she is probably moving.
Yeah.
I guess there's some sort of. There's people checking books out, they, I'm sure there's some blog for that, or they could go back through the reference. See, oh, we check out two books during the day, you know, stuff like that.
I imagine, I mean, the people that I've seen are retired people, so. They have much of a schedule. Yeah, yeah, but still, that's after school, so.
And I know I let people in. Throughout the day, but there's probably five, five or six, it's like two or three people come to the door and they'll just say, oh, I'm here for the library, and so I just let them in.
And do you think it's competitive?
Not always, there's some that I recognize, but there's some that are different, there's not like a schedule, like it's not every Wednesday I see the same lady or something, I, I know Tuesdays, I always see all those moms and those little ones. Or grandmas, the little ones or whatever, but otherwise it's kind of random who comes. But the library people might notice a better pattern, or I don't know who shows up on days I'm not in that office or when I'm out somewhere else.
God's point about the SRO too, that's probably something that, like I said, we gotta figure that out, because that's probably pretty key.
Yeah.
I mean, I was gonna pass it down in the. Later on, but have we heard anything about the grant application for Jasper County? I asked, we were very just. I'm sure it's not like a thought, quick thing.
I thought that was the one that was, or the city was going to be the one to be corrected, but I, I didn't know, yeah, he said, I have heard it's confirmed that it's been submitted or, yeah.
I, I'm not changing. As far as I remember, there wasn't any type of grant that he knew of. But let me look back at my emails, because I did ask about that right after. The meeting, I can look at the next day, that, the grant for the SRO or the grant for the radio boosters. Okay, oh yeah, it was radio. Um, we talked about the radio grant and was there any kind of a grant for a booster and. Said we could look at a community grant, but nothing that I know of that's out there specifically for those types.
But I think we were talking about that, so the county was saying.
Oh yeah, I think it wasn't Doug or somebody, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that somebody has taken it, so that.
I actually sent an email to the Limbo Sully District and I'm just waiting here. Because I wanted to hear her perspective.
Third, 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 I, you know, part of the city thing, but because they would respond to it all before three years, that's within the city to the trend. For three years, that's kind of the.
Would that contradict our want of a SRO in the building every hour of school, if there's a town emergency that they're gonna respond to?
I wouldn't feel too bad about that.
Yeah, I was saying, from my perspective, if you think about it. We're still gonna have a ton of bridge.
Because Mike Haskins feels a huge emergency, they're gonna have, they're gonna want every police officer there anyway, that's close, so that whoever's here would probably want to have.
And I think it's gonna be a pretty big, it's not gonna be some barking dog call or something like that, it's gonna be like, hey, the. Casey's got robbed or some, something like, you know, something pretty major, I can see, but yeah, they leave, leave for that.
I think this, the question I would ask the back to accountability though. Who obviously have a report to us, nor would they need to, but if we don't know that they've left for a call and we'll go looking for help. So like some sort of, hey, I've let somebody know that I have. Yeah, we'll leave that. Would you? So, yeah, we had, I know, I agree, just got a text. Says the sheriff is applying for a full-time SRO for the school, the cops grant application process just opened for the upcoming year, the SRO would be full time for the. For the school during regular hours. Uh, for the school during regular hours.
Thank you.
I guess the sheriff is applying for it.
Yeah, that's probably something. Just kind of keep that in our mind, or have, you wanna have something next meeting?
I'm happy to put it in the minutes of the safety and security grant, and that comes up every quarter onto your board. But maybe you don't wanna wait quarter. But they're probably not gonna find anything out in a grant in that length of time.
I guess we know.
We could see if it's been applied.
Yeah, I'd say just follow up if it applies going on data.
In a quarter or in a month?
Well, in a month.
I'll just put it in the minutes under that.
Even if, so we kind of keep, alright, you probably, yeah. Bill, check that with the city, every hour.
Yeah, yeah, I done that down, yeah. I'll check on that. Getting all the reading, seeing just what details.
Who else?
Rob has something, maybe else, safety, oh, we just did a tornado drill. And then we had Jamie, did I say this already, Jamie come and walk around with us and figure out where the safest places were. Compared to where they had been, so we, we switched the locations, lots of locations. I, we talked about yesterday, but that worked out just fine, but.
What was district budget? At the same. Things we talked about, keep a tax rate level.
Yeah, um, so there's an attachment on that, on that one down there, and that's what the actual. Um, rate is going to be, once they settled to two and a half percent, I was then able to go in and put in the specifics, and so we're actually. A few hundredths of a percent less, so we're still sitting seventeen point, or eighteen point six nine.
Questions?
Um. I know we've talked about stuff, but just. Just wanna walk through like reasoning high level, just so I understand it fully. Yep, for each one of the buckets that are called out, and how that, why they're different from what you maybe.
Yep, so um, I'm gonna walk you through the notes that I have on the paper that talks to you about the dollar amounts, those are. What's most important to us, okay?
Okay.
So the three hundred and twenty thousand is in the management fund. That will take care of incentive packages that we've offered um. For early retirement or things like that, so that allows us to relieve the general fund and move it to the management fund. Okay, it also takes care of our property insurance, so like building liability, casualty. Um, vehicle, that kind of thing comes out of management fund. Also, our equipment breakdown insurance uh premiums come out of that account. Um, that alleviates the expense on the general fund, like when we're, a lot of, a lot of it is technology. Um, so we don't have to spend general fund money uh to pay for the repairs, the equipment breakdown insurance does. It also takes care of anything that's not attached to the building, so um, that washer. Um, that we had an issue with, that was so old that we just got a new one, so they'll do a cash out swap out is what they call it, they'll give us. Some money um towards the new one. Um, or anything else that's not attached to the building goes under that equipment breakdown, um, like our scoreboards. Those are equipment breakdown, like the track. The track system out there, that's equipment breakdown, and so that alleviates the general fund from expenses, okay? Um.
And I think that one thing on there, that is just the, the difference. Why it's. As much more than it was last year, and then like cash reserve down, like. Right, cause that L Y R was two thirty seven, seven hundreds, you're now here, so.
In the management fund.
Right.
Yeah, so, so the year, so the difference between the two is tax increases, incentive packages that we didn't have in previous year.
Those are the primaries.
Yes, yeah, yeah, it is, yeah, yeah. Um, the cash reserve, we were at three fifty five um last year, we're at four hundred this year, they tell us how much that we can reserve, or we can cash levy for. And we don't wanna go over that amount, um, we're right around a million dollars, but you don't wanna take all million of it either, because then you're gonna tie up all your levy. And then. If you need it one, two, three or four years down the road, you've tied it up already. Okay, so you just kind of. Plus, in theory, you're taking taxpayers' money, and if you don't actually need it right now, it's just sitting in the bank, right?
Yeah, you know.
And so um. I try to play the. The game of getting the, you know.
Make sure we have enough.
The sweet spot.
Is there being?
Yep. Yep. And then um, we're at four point five million in instruction, so that, if you think about your instruction, that's. All the teachers, um, paras. All their instruction supplies, all their benefits. Um, curriculum, um, anything that is directly related to instruction is the four point five million. The two hundred and sixty thousand in student support services is basically your lunch account. For thereabouts, and um. Uh, you would find your counselors in there, that kind of thing in there. I'm sorry, the three hundred thousand in the non-instructional is your nutrition, your student support services is like counselors and uh just the support services. Um. And then the nineteen, nine hundred and nineteen thousand is other expenditures, that's basically our bond payments. And that's dictated by an amortization schedule.
Welcome to approve.
Second.
Second.
You do a call. Uh, John Northrup.
Yes.
Tyler Akins.
Yes.
Ashley Conchera. Yeah. Ray Hauser.
Yes.
Roy Robinson.
Yes.
Angela.
But it's been approved. Especially the.
Okay, so every five years you have to approve your district's special education delivery plan, and so we had a committee, um, we've met. Three or four times, it was administrators, the A E A, special ed teachers, some gen ed teachers, some parents. And so we looked at our plan and kind of, for the most part, it stayed about the same, but we did make some tweaks. Um, and then we sent it out in the newsletter, so the community could take a look at it, they wanted to give any feedback. Um, and then officially, we need to have board approval, so um, one thing you might note in there is we have the. The point sheet that we use to determine um if somebody's full-time or part-time or whatever, and so we've used a different scale this year. And it's one that a couple of districts around us have also started using, but it's new. So instead of setting like a point total, I think before, like at seventy points was full-time and. Forty was considered half-time or whatever, we don't know yet what that number is gonna be, because we don't know exactly how this scale is gonna work. So for this coming year, it's kind of the pilot year, so then next year, you'll wanna revisit this and put in those final numbers of like, we're gonna use. Thirty and fifteen or whatever as the cut scores. Um, but for now, we can just approve it without the numbers in it. Um, the, the cut scores, everything else is the same, it's just that, that. With the scale, how the teachers rate their, uh, their points change, so we just don't know exactly what the right score should be. So looking at that, um, I visited with Clay, who's gonna be the new. Uh, secondary principal, and he's got some special ed experience, so he took a, looked at it too, and um. Once it gets closer to the time of school starting, the teachers, the special ed teachers will look at their. Case loads and then figure out exactly who would take which kids and how it'll all work. But that'll be like Clay and, and Zach and probably Chris will probably help with that. The teachers will provide a lot of the sorting also. So. Any questions about that?
Is the scale really the most significant change to?
Yeah, probably, um, because most of the things, even on the scale, didn't change that much, but they changed. Some of the waypoints were distributed on the scale. Um, some things. It didn't make any sense on the old one, so this makes a little better sense the way they break things down, you know, maybe if somebody. Sees a kid for a hundred minutes a month, I'm just like making up numbers, aside, don't even open, but. They might get one point, whereas if they saw a kid four hundred minutes or a week, hundred minutes a week versus four hundred minutes a week, they get one point, and then if they come four hundred, they might get. One point two, whereas now it's like. One, two, three, or just equi- more equitable distribution, but we just don't know exactly, once they start going through it all. Did we weight things correctly, cause maybe we weighted, you know, even with the staff input, we maybe weighted something that. Should have counted for a lot more, it's a lot more work. And a lot more time-consuming, and we maybe didn't weigh it heavy enough, so that's where we have to kind of run through it. For a year and see. Did we wait it, cause we could always tweak it if it's not right, we want to be reflective of their actual case loads. And Zach and Rob, is there anything I'd add, cause they, they both are in on this too.
I just am truly volatile in July and August when we get new kids in all the time, so just, I am one, a little frustrated right now, and that. I, I can't tell you what, what, if you're gonna have high school, middle school, elementary combo. We really need to wait until that first of August and sit down with everybody around the table and see where can everybody fit in.
And after registration, I mean, people just move in sometimes out of nowhere that we weren't expecting, so we really can't determine case loads. So we know who, who our kids are, so.
But we determined who our special ed director's gonna be, or you have.
And I have talked about it, but it's really probably. Makes sense that it would be Clay, just because of his experience, I mean, he's a special ed consultant right now, but it's probably something like. Chris is like, yep, yep, it's Clay, so.
Yeah, I mean, obviously you're sharing that position right now, but you can't share across functions next year. So if you're sharing superintendent, you should pretend you can't also share your special ed director. So I think we had to evaluate it and look, you know, maybe there's a possibility, if I'm extra in the following, you would possibly even share Clay with another district and generate some operational sharing with that money. That can look. However you want it to look, um, to stay within the guidelines of, of what they're gonna want you to do, there's, there has to be some sort of service exchange, right, to be ethical about it. Um, how that looks though can, can vary. So I think we have to evaluate where we're at from our operational sharing standpoint, because we wanna get to twenty-one, obviously. And then decide which position that makes the most sense for. Uh, because you are sharing a number of positions right now with G M G that just are not gonna be feasible next year.
I think um. Because we're almost maxed out. And we're really, will only utilize one. Of the superintendent sharing, so even if we lost special ed sharing, we'll still be able to max out because we still have some left, yeah. We had super.
You lose H R too.
Yeah, that's four, so six, seven, six between the two.
Between the six. But ultimately, if you're wanting to know who could help, like, your special ed program.
Yeah.
Probably Clay, just because of his background in special ed, not to say Chris couldn't, I mean, I, but Clay was a special ed teacher.
I would forewarn you that your maintenance sharing group is probably gonna get covered in that.
I'm not surprised.
Wasn't claimed up there.
So, anyway, back to the D S D P, so we just need to approve it, but um, then probably, I would imagine Clay will take that over.
So I'm just trying to update the names here that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think there's like a highly, we have to put in a date of when we approved it, and then it actually gets approved, our draft got approved by um Hartland's. Special ed director, and so the last step was to have our board approve it.
So. That you have to go through the state certification process for this, so like if we uh update the weighting. You have to go through another, and is it like a?
And honestly, it's kind of just, it used to be an absolute law requirement, they had to do it every five years. But it's my understanding now that it's just um best practice to do it every five years, so since we just went through this whole process. I don't see where we would have to go through the whole process again, I think we can just. Update the total and then just know.
Our framework will be the same.
Frameworks are the same.
Be tweaked and some.
Yeah, you just have to update it and submit it to with your site visits, but they don't do that anymore.
We shouldn't approve the. Special ed delivery plan. Mention, so.
I have to guess.
I, 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 let's say no. I should have planned that approved. I ask the safety group insurance program.
So this is just our. Insurance. Really. It's just the same, yeah. This is our E M C, yeah, just our E M C, not, not all the insurance, just building, yeah, we hadn't received a dividend from them for quite some time, I don't anticipate, we'll get one this year. But.
They're gonna pay for it.
Yeah, more than. Someone got a little loose with the hand writing on the numbers or reviewing, just trying to catch up or what.
Well, I think a lot of schools had, well, we had ratio, and we had hail, and they missed paying out big claims, I think, so.
I think it's probably, and COVID. I think it's probably been at least five years.
We were, we got one. When, like you were the president, so I remember we were in the library, and the guy like brought a check, made a picture, and. Do you remember that?
I wouldn't.
I remember, I do remember getting a dividend every year until the last.
Yeah, it was like this.
Three or four.
He never actually did it, like we, like we posed, John had a pose with this guy and picking his hair. Maybe that was like no workers comp claims, did we get a prize for that?
We did, that must be, we got a certificate.
Oh, it wasn't money, huh?
From a woman math.
Okay, I finally remember wrong, fine, I, I just remember John posing.
Then the next year, they stopped us with it on just under eight thousand dollars.
Take our certificate back.
Um, I will give you a little bit of bad news. It's really bad news on the insurance. We have a thirty nine percent health insurance increase. So I put it out to bid. We'll see what we get back. Um. As you know, I haven't been happy with United Healthcare, I wasn't happy with them when we were with them fifteen years ago, so I was hoping that that had changed, but. Hasn't, we're about ninety-six percent of our premium utilization, where in the past, we've been hundred and twenties, you know, of utilization, which. Old four increases, you know, but when you're at ninety-six percent, I don't see how a thirty-nine percent increase is justified. So, we're putting it out to bid to Walmart Blue Cross and Blue Shield as a standalone. Um, I went back to I C V A with my tail between my legs and see what they can do for us, that, that'll be a group policy.
I still am curious, if we're part of a group policy, how our experience causes us to have individual rates? Like. We're part of that group, shouldn't we get the benefit of being?
So there's three levels, so there's three levels of groups. Great. Okay, and terrible.
Can you tell me too?
We do.
So how long does our experience? I'm really curious about that, cause I assume. I'm really curious about that, cause I assume.
I don't know, cause we keep, I mean, for probably the last five years, we've had well over a hundred percent experiences. So I'm still waiting for it to happen. But. Probably not gonna happen anytime soon. You know, we have some high. You know, not too long ago, we had a million dollar policy on someone. Some emergent issues, you know. Heart, we have some heart issues. You know.
Yeah, I was, I was just curious, like. If you end up ever having a good year, like how long before the bad experiences, we're not off. Sure, she seems like this to leave, they're on there longer than the good. But.
Think we check into that one. It seemed like five years or whatever. Or five years never, because we're on site, we're having another experience, you know, something happens and we got another employee with a big.
I had five in my head and that's what I C V A gave me last year when I was gonna put it out to bid the first time. So that's what makes me think it's five years. But I don't. So.
That number sticks in my head. I can't say that's right either.
What I'm really upset about is I, I told our agent. I don't want an initial rate that is just getting me to change. And then next year, you're gonna sock me with. A forty percent increase. And I did say forty percent increase. And now I gotta go back through all this all over again. No, 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 no. Here we are. So he's keeping his distance from me right now. I don't know why.
Change regardless.
But I'd say, you know, we can find who will. Give us an option, but.
Well, considering you, I don't care. Bad with their service and how their rates. And I normally get my insurance rates the first of February. I got them yesterday. Last night.
Yeah, I was bound up today.
And I've been on him and on him and on him and they normally send them out in April. I said, okay. So can you give me the names of your schools that you serve? That also have United Healthcare, because I wanna see how they're doing their negotiations without an insurance rate. Well, I don't have any schools that have United Healthcare. So then he went to his broker to get a list from them and I'm still waiting on that list.
When is this effective? Like when? July one?
Yep. Last, last year when I did, it took me four months. And I'm just now starting now, but. I've, I've gotten everything up to the other three already. I did it first thing this morning. And I C V A told me they'd be back with a rate by the end of the day. And there's no doubt that they will. That's just how we are. I mean, that's the one thing about I C V A was even though they had. Well, their Blue Cross Blue Shield was expensive. We had great customer service.
Did they get it back to you today then?
I haven't seen it yet, but it could still come.
So do we have to like make a decision on that? Is that something we make a decision on? Do we have to make a decision on?
No, no, I just wanted you to know. So I'm trying to get everything like, you know, what we have now. Actually, when I went to I C V A, I said, can you quote me what we have last, what we had last year, exactly what we had? So it would be just like one back to the same thing. So what makes me mad is between. The, the good rate that they gave us last year and this rate this year. We probably could have stayed with Blue Cross Blue Shield and absorbed the increase over the two years and still been less. That's what's maddening to me. And of course, they're, I mean, they ask you what your new rate is going to be right on the application. I can't. Not tell them what my new rate's gonna be. So if it's at thirty nine percent, they can come in at thirty eight percent and we're happy about it, you know? It's just, it's so maddening. They didn't even quote me another thousand, two thousand dollar package. The next one is two thousand, four thousand or five thousand ten. At United Healthcare if we were to try and get something less.
Five, I mean, those packages aren't. See a lot, I guess, and I would say that they're pretty common. It's really hard to find something that's under twenty five hundred, even with private.
We were at five and when Matt was here, we went through budget cuts and reduced it to a thousand, two thousand. We were at five hundred thousand. Reduced it to a thousand, two thousand.
That's been ten years ago.
Yeah, when Matt was here. I had a thought that. Maybe somehow we could rework the. Insurance wave. Options stipend option. But I don't really wanna speak too much to it, so I. I have it just about worked out, but maybe we can go a different route. With everyone, hopefully everybody has. See what those rates are. Hopefully they'll be fast about it.
You know, they're gonna be bad, so yeah, thinking of all times is a good idea. Again, moving up in the deductible amounts, I think is just knowing again.
They're, they are just all high. May I just think about, I just think about the up horse we had this last year. Or whether in, in I C V A it was covered or it wasn't covered. I mean, that, that wasn't the only thing, but and then if we go from a. Thousand dollar to a twenty five hundred or.
But if you go to a higher deductible plan. And it brings the premiums way down, you can offset it by ponying up the deductible cost in some situations. Or at least half of it. So if you go to an H S A, you can at least half fund their deductible. Let's see if premiums drop by like forty percent. And you end up, everybody's out of here.
Yeah. So I'll see what the rates are. Cause those other two were H S As. The other two quotes and they were at two, what did I say? Two and four and five and term.
Personally speaking and running the numbers from way back when, watching people go to H S As. It can highly justifiable and it just says our great games right now, so. It can be better for that than that, I guess.
We're gonna put ashes off of that for the next years or?
I don't know, but we need to like a window that goes through, so we can just talk to them.
Hey, back to.
Have we got the rates for the property for, I mean, I'm sure they're.
Yeah, they went up. The board is telling me it's gonna be between fifteen and twenty five. But let me find if I have any patch. So keep, keep going and I'll spit it out here in a minute.
Yeah, I mean, they're best of. I think we've checked. Game in town as far as rates.
Kind of like, I think Continental used to do schools. They don't do schools anymore. I think they're.
It's like ninety percent of the schools use this.
Sure, yeah, and because.
So I'll make a motion to approve or continue participation in the I E S B group insurance program.
Second, I'll look at papers. I. Sure, it's been approved. At this business.
So that's another one that we just always get. They are the ones that help us. Create our budget and they do videos every, during the session, once a week, there's webinars. There are always a phone call away. They make the comprehensive bench of projection model. It's just a really, really good service, especially for the price. It's.
I'll make a motion to continue our participation in the business membership.
Through the seniors for graduation.
Forty two.
So it's important to know, next year, we've. Always felt for a long time that we would let all seniors walk to graduation. So if they haven't met those requirements, they don't actually receive a diploma and continue working through the summer. So. One is even any kid could fail government or, or English at the end, they mostly won't, but there are some that have to put a little bit of work in. There are some that will have to put extensive work in. So approving them for graduation does not necessarily mean you're. Approving a diploma. So some schools will say, you're not going to walk on Sunday if you haven't completed requirements. We. Haven't done that. We just let kids go through the ceremony, but hold diploma till they just so.
They get like a participation.
Uh, we, we've just started. The ones that, ones that are more than a summer away will just give a certificate of attendance. If we feel like it's summer in the summer, we just won't not sign the document. And there's nothing on the jacket, just. We'll have.
Opening up surprises. I think you knew it was coming.
Yeah, we communicate with all that are, uh, three or four may not be there.
For this year?
For this, that will not be ready when they walk across the stage.
Is this group the one that's a little bit closer and then next year's? I know we were looking at so that we. Is this the year or next year?
Probably next year will be more impacted than this year.
And then it starts with that?
I think so. I think so. The problem. Just we approve students to go online. That's something the board has approved in our kids. We, we have a. I think a large number of kids that are online and once they leave our building. We're just, there's not much we can do. And there's. I mean, all the way down to the middle school, a student or two that is not getting things done. I mean, every grade, I can tell you that there's kids online that aren't. Getting it done, but they follow through. We, we approve them to do the online work there. You guys would have to not allow a student to be a full time online worker.
I don't know, I, that's something to consider, not my, like, future conversation. If you or has, you know, semester in or whatever and you're. Just aren't getting it back in the classroom.
To catch back with the older kids is then probably dropping. So there's a, not, not always. I mean, I think we're approving some students. It's like. That student should be in school and the tail's dragging the dog and they're just doing it on, but. Then you get some kids that are working a lot. So whether they want to work or need to work, some of both. And then you get the kids that I will tell you, if we didn't approve them to be online, they just wouldn't come and now they're dropout to where at least, you know, they're just slowly getting. Better.
There's a chance with conversation.
Yeah, for sure. I think everybody's having that.
Where there's such a disruption, it's better to, other students to let them go online and don't.
For sure.
Disrupt everything.
We're, we're probably gonna have a student that will finish at home because of some situations at school. At that point then, they'll just stay on Google Classroom with the teacher. So that, it's online, but they're doing the work from home, but through the teachers. When our kids go online, like choose that option, it's all edgenuity. It's truly an online based learning that our teachers. Are not associated with. So it's another little bit of a strain that between Dennis and Travis and I. We're, we're up into the mid to high teens of kids that are online right now. So just monitoring that and seeing where they're at and responding to the teacher, I mean, the parents, it's a lot. You know, for whose, whose responsibility is that?
I mean, I think there's definitely. Lot of use for it and a lot of people that will use it well. I think that's great. Yeah, the rest of them, there's certain case by case situations that would.
And there's some hybrid models. We have kids that because of situations, we, I mean, they're here for a little bit and then they take a couple out of here. So. I mean, there, there's definitely good and bad, but I just found that living on that you'll have, you're approving this and that's. Our district's how it's been. You can change it that all kids who are in good standing, at least behaviorally and the way things are can go. Pretty good conversation for down the road.
Motion to approve the seniors pending their successful enrollment. Will go through.
Second.
Yeah, and Bill did email, so I'll blow that out to you guys. Like just like what he said. Said they'll be pouring the footings next week and. This is, email's a little vague, but. One says scheduled to be here sometime next week. So I'm not sure if that's the ice maker or the garage door. Or the sign clearly say, so I'll just follow up with them. And then he said they'll be pouring the footings next week. So I assume that's the sign. So.
I thought we put that on hold or something.
We really wanted to have it installed before graduation, just so it could look nice when everybody sees our situation.
It's gonna be that sign. It's gonna have new.
New sign, a new. Like digital words.
Yeah. Who's gonna be in charge of that?
I don't know.
That's the thing out there is that it's like nobody wanted to be in charge of. But if you don't, it looks like, if you got the same message there for two months, it's like, well, it's kind of a joke.
I think it could actually be. It does. Yeah. So I would think.
I mean, it's important, I think that we put somebody in charge of it and it's like. Everybody's got enough duties, but congratulations, you have an extra one.
I think we assign that to the super.
Do we have a multimedia yearbook class?
There's a yearbook class and then also we've got some staff members who are like really good, like, I know, I'm not trying to give another job to Amanda Mormon. But she is so good at like our Facebook page, not elementary Facebook page. She just is so. Does just cute stuff and really gets it out there. So I mean, between her and Bree and some of those people. They could maybe do, and I don't know how, it's like a super easy thing to do, like you just type something and hit submit and then it pops up there. But with Bree and Gray, they are tech people.
I think we can probably just export like our actual activity calendar. So that have the dates, like what was happening here, whatever, and it just is on a roll. But then you can stop it and put it in something. That's why it used to be up at the bank anyway.
Sounds like Julie's in charge.
I, real quick question. So I just keep thinking about on the sides and grounds and stuff. Do schools, I don't, I don't know if we, we could even offer this, but do schools offer like? Hey, are there any students that wanna make a little money and like legitimately have a work bill? If there was two or three qualified students that. Junior seniors, you know, that were, I don't know, the odds and ends around here that we could legitimately instead of. I don't know, if we're gonna spend the money, keep it in house and actually like, I mean. Utilize our students if they were even interested, you know? And, and if the job doesn't get done right, well, then it's a learning experience and we. Something, but yeah, a real informal thing, but I don't know if I'm an insurance, I, I, you know, that one gets into the, can we even do that?
Yeah, we do hire them in the summer. They sometimes hire them to. Yeah, we do hire them in the summer. Um they sometimes hire them to blow. And then they've used them as just summer custodial help. So they do do it.
So seniors can, they have to take. Our board policy says you're taking seven as a as a senior, eight as a junior. So junior sophomores. They could work before and after school, but we can't for freedom. We do have seniors working during the day because they work during their open period. So on an open that they would rarely leave, we've hired them for. Peripet and to do paraphrase.
It sounds like to me like you're leading down a road of inefficiencies going on and so that is what needs to be addressed.
Huge list of like things that.
And um cause we are having parents, teacher, but we know these kids wanna be teacher and.
Yeah, we had, we have the grants for like the parents teacher. But it's a pretty good gig.
I didn't know if something said you were just like trying to.
Nope, that should. You know, where I got the thing about it was honestly, the last time we had a meeting was door handles, right? Like in my mind initially, I thought. Hey, Bill doesn't have time to go on a chain during, but maybe students, it might be way bigger job than what I what I realized before, but that was where I just started thinking.
Why he doesn't have um. Craig or especially Craig. Chad, do it.
I think it's. Yeah, some of the little things, but the door handles, I know it's a much more. Yeah, I yeah, during the summer they do that.
Had a lot of conversation involved with lately. I know you invited something that particular topic, but I'm starting to wonder like. Can we ask that be or should we be asking that we join more meetings? And speak to progress and issues on a regular basis so that we can have the conversation. Directly with whoever's in charge.
Yep. Sure can.
We get things caught up.
Be hopeful to know how the bigger projects are coming along budget wise, time only one.
Because, I mean, we should be bringing some of the objects to them for the main meeting. I haven't seen, I haven't heard anything, so.
Well, superintendent.
Yeah, it's pretty short and sweet too. Um, you know, I just thought the. The city school meeting was really nice to see so many people come and it was a great of open conversation and um I thought there was a lot of good feedback from the city and then for us and. Um I was pleased to hear just all the updates of just the different community committees. It was just a really nice evening, I thought.
Seems gotta give people invigorated.
So there there were a lot of like good actionable things that came across of it as well. I, the one thing I was a little unclear when we left was. Who was for sure doing that like follow up and action items, so. Doug was gonna take the grant to Jasper County for the SRO, so that was one. Um and then it was pretty vague. We all know we need to go find money for radio boomsters or whatever, but you said you asked. And that and there's not, so like what do we, we're gonna have to resolve this.
So, well. Weren't you gonna call to see if they did really truly have any dead spots?
I contacted um, I, did I see you? I, I contacted. Um the people in charge over the weekend and um I sent an email just following up. So I just sent it this afternoon, after talking to Cory. I haven't heard back yet. I'll keep you posted about what I heard about. These are the people who ran the simulation this weekend, the sheriff, the Jasper County Sheriff and then I think. Yeah, and the police or different fire departments and to see if they're really true, like how how much dead spot situation.
Well, it sounded like there's two different systems that. And like the the sheriffs. Their system is fine with ours or whatever. It's it's basically the Baxter Police and the Baxter Fire Department that. Has dead spots or supposedly has dead spots, so that everybody else is working okay, so that's what I took.
Make sure that that's regardless, we're gonna have to resolve it because if we emergency. If there's emergency and they're truly our dead spot.
Yeah, but are we, are we? Gonna have to resolve it or to me, if if every, if Marshall County Sheriff says our system works fine, Jasper County Sheriff. Pretty soon it's like there's two entities that are having the problem here. And it's the Baxter Police and Baxter Fire Department, so should they fix it?
I think there's a lot of the around us, but if you go into like a city and a fire marshal tells you you have to fix something to operate a restaurant or whatever. You're not gonna say, well, you go fix your system, probably you're gonna do what they say this stupid concrete and. I mean, I think it's great to. I just want to have it like resolved so that way we can. And I wanted to hear that it's safe for everybody here, so.
Well, I think there's gotta be a middle ground somehow.
I do too.
The way technology ruled the world this year, if Raycom's so bad, I mean, motorola's not doing the game in town. You know, at the fifty thousand dollars or whatever they said, there's gotta be something in between there, is what my thought is.
Yeah, I'd say let's just buy some creative solutions. Necessarily the specific, so. I'll get there at the moment time, but. I'll be interested to see what they say, you know, the head spots and where they exist. And if there's other solutions out there, then the city was. The fire department was here too, so you would have thought that they would have been using their radios and the county's their radios. See how it all worked. I'll, as soon as I hear back, I'll be happy to forward all that to you guys.
So they share all all went, I assume.
Well, yeah, so that's why I was just asking like how it was out of town, so I was like. Just in a nutshell, how did it go? Were there any things that you wanted to like tell us about how it went or their problems or? And then I asked specifically about the communication system with radios. So I just literally haven't heard back yet. The only other thing that really has been kind of consuming is we've been, we were waiting on this school calendar. Because we were waiting to see if they changed the start date and it sounds like there's just unless there's like a. Twelve or whatever midnight change, they're not changing the start date. So we have a calendar that typically I would bring to you months ago, but we've been sitting on it. And then actually just today, Rob and Zach and I and Wendy and. Chris got on it because we have a big conversation about um the back to school time, how's that gonna look and who's gonna go to what? There's some um professional learning that people are gonna go to, so we're gonna uh. The bottom line is I'll bring it to him then. So Clay and Chris and Wendy. Are gonna have a conversation about how they want them back to school and house of how they want it to look. In August, because that's kind of the big hangup is how is that PD time coming back to school? Because really, Rob and I. We're not gonna be here to help implement it, so we need to get what they want sorted out. Um and so we were kind of just waiting and we're just like at some point, enough's enough, it's not changing, so we're gonna go with August when there is our start date. And then. Bring you the calendar for next month, so. It is a Friday, it's kind of crazy, but so we'll have a Friday start and then you think it's a one o'clock dismissal that day, then there'll be a a game that night. And one other time since I've been here, we've had a Friday start. And it's actually kind of fun. We had a game that night or the stroke scrimmage or whatever. And then we'll like get fully input then following. Well, that's kind of what we've been working on quite a bit, the board policy stuff, I've been trying to update. Mostly just trying to figure out how to make sure we've got everything ready to pass off and it's nice to have Chris. Here and available and if we email or text or whatever, he's easy to. And then since we don't have anything from the union, we were able to strike all of that.
Do you wanna go and just do all these reservations?
Do all the reservations at once and then the uh. Contracts and then we can come back.
Okay, so do we just read each of them?
Sure.
Okay, so for personnel, we've got resignation from Cassie Applegate Brummel at Secondary English, resignation at Scott Brummel. Secondary Social Studies, resignation from Jules McGrew, FCS. Resignation from Holly Ford, a special education teacher, and resignation from Jennifer Wizniewski as secondary science.
Motion to approve the resignations.
Motion, I'm motion to approve the resignation.
Okay, so I'll do the two MOUs, just kind of explain. So we have two um. Memos of understanding with two staff members or future staff members, but they just don't have teaching licenses yet, so we can't give them a teaching contract. So Danielle Myers is gonna be Middle School English and um reading, writing teacher, and she's gonna take over second semester. And she's student teaching in the fall, so this, there's a memo to kind of a handshake between her and us that will. She'll start in January and then Kevin Cook is is student teaching right now.
Is in Rappel.
In the Rappel program, so he'll get his license, but he doesn't have it yet, so we can't give him a contract yet. So he's High School English. And then just regular contracts for Amanda Rep. Secondary FCS, Nolan Krueger, Middle School Social Studies, Robin Linder, Middle School English, Reading, Writing Teacher. Uh Nick Norin, Secondary Business, Kirsten Jurgensen, Middle School Math, and Amy Jones, Special Ed. We've knocked out a lot, like one of them we just found out for sure today, the Middle School Science, so. We'll, we'll get busy on that one.
Motion to approve the MOUs and contracts for.
Second.
Second, I'll pay for today. Uh so now we'll go to exam session. Yes. Boy matters not covered by the collective bargaining. We have motion to vote of the obsession. Exempt session seven twenty three.